Ladies and gentlemen, please welcome our mayor, Buddy Dyer.
Good afternoon and welcome to the August 15th meeting of the Orlando City Council. We're going to begin today's proceedings with the invocation today offered by Pastor Alfonso Galliano, who has served as associate pastor to the International Family Center Church for the past three years. He was born in Bogota and at the age of two, he moved his, with his mother, to Orlando where he's lived ever since. He graduated from the Oral Roberts University in Tulsa, Oklahoma, where he earned his bachelor's degree in administration and theology. Pastor Galliano also proudly serves as an advisor in the Orange County Public School Faith-Based Initiative. After working for seven years with inner-city youth as a youth pastor, he has sent to, he was sent to lead a community development and church planning project in Costa Rica. He returned to Orlando to continue working with the Hispanic community. He worked and served as an entrepreneur, youth pastor, senior pastor, and missionary. His life experiences have made him passionate about reaching and restoring and equipping families with biblical knowledge and strong moral values. After the invocation, we will add in a pledge of allegiance today by District Three Commissioner Robert Stewart. You may stand or remain seated.
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. Thank you for the opportunity to come before your presence. Father, your scripture says, "To trust in you with all of our hearts and to lean not on our own understanding; then in all our ways that we should submit to you, and that you would direct our paths." Father, help us not to be wise in our own eyes, but to fear you in everything that we do and that we shun evil. Father, we pray for this meeting. We pray that you give wisdom to guide and govern the beautiful city of Orlando. Father, we pray this day that you will lead those in authority over us to have the wisdom to guide, to lead, to direct this wonderful city, to do everything that you want us to do here. Father, we pray for the law enforcement officers, the firefighters, nurses. We pray for the schoolteachers. We pray for our children on their first day back at school today. Father, we pray for our city and we pray for healing for those who have lost loved ones. Lord, I just pray that you will bring peace to our streets and in our homes. Father, I pray this day that as you guide this council meeting, that you will create an inviting atmosphere in this place, and that you will guide us once again to your truth. We pray that Orlando will continue to be a place for families to come from all over the world, to rest, to vacation, and to enjoy themselves. We pray all these things in Jesus' mighty name. Amen and amen.
The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll and make a determination of a quorum, please?
Yes. Commissioner Gray.
Here.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Here.
Commissioner Stewart.
Here.
Commissioner Sheehan.
Here.
Commissioner Hill.
Here.
Commissioner Eng.
Here.
Mayor Dyer.
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Ask everybody to put their phones on silent or vibrate. We've recently renovated the council chambers and the ringing of a cellphone triggers an electric shock device that's installed under each seat, so I just thought I'd warn you about that before your phone rang. That includes council members, just so you know. Okay, let's take up for consideration the minutes from the 2017 Budget Address Agenda Review and City Council meetings of July 25th.
So moved to second.
Motion by Commissioner Sheehan, second by Commissioner Hill. All in favor indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and so the motion carries right into wards and presentations. Lisa Early, Director of Family Parks and Recreation, you are first up.
Thank you, Mayor Dyer, commissioners. I have the privilege today of announcing an award that the city got, and it relates to the amazing work that's going on with children that the city does and has been doing for many years. This past year, the Families Parks and Recreation Department worked with about 13,000 children from all over the city. This includes all the children who attend our 16 recreation centers, our 18 after-school All-Stars sites, the Operation Americor program at five city high schools, plus more than 1,000 children who reside in the Paramore Heritage Community. And for the past many years, under Mayor Dyer's leadership and with the amazing support of all of the commissioners here, we have worked diligently as a department to infuse all of our operations throughout the FPR department at all of these sites with practices that research shows is effective when it comes to helping kids be successful academically, socially, and economically. So I'm just going to give you a couple of examples of what I'm proudest of. First of all, on any given day, after school and throughout the summer, all across the city, we have in my department about 100 teachers and another 150 Americor members who are working with kids at our recreation centers, our after-school All-Stars and PKZ sites, helping those kids be successful in school. All of this is under the guidance, support, and management of the Recreation Division staff. We have our managers from all across the city today. I want to give them kudos for their hard work that they do in this. The after-school All-Stars staff and leadership who have done this, and the PKZ staff, they're all here today, and they are so bought into being impactful for kids across the city and have really put their hearts and minds into that.
Lisa, why don't you have all the staff members you just called out stand up.
Stand up, guys. Ms. Ricky Oyutu. Thank you, Mayor. We're also deeply invested in the post-secondary end of the pipeline, helping youth become economically sustainable adults. For example, the Recreation Division and PKZ have a robust program of taking hundreds of kids on college tours every year, and after-school All-Stars through the Operation Americor program is working with 2,000 11th and 12th graders, helping them transition from high school to post-secondary education and jobs. And then finally, the other thing that I'm so proud of is that at any given moment, the FPR department employs about 625 youth at any given moment, and we have a bunch of those youth employees with us today. Guys, stand up. Sasha, let's go up a bit. They're employed as city staff, as Americor members, or by grants and fundraising efforts through FPR's nonprofit organization, the Orlando Community Youth Trust. So today, we are receiving recognition for this important work from the U.S. Conference of Mayors through the 2016 National Education Pathways with a Purpose Initiative. And so to this end, I would like to introduce Ms. Stephanie Nellens Page, Vice President of National Engagement from USA Funds, who has traveled all the way to Orlando to present this award. Ms. Nellens Page.
Thank you so much. Mr. Mayor, commissioners, and the students and the great city, citizens of Orlando, I am just delighted to represent USA Funds and honored to recognize the great work that your community is doing to promote educational and economic success in Orlando. USA Funds is an Indianapolis-based nonprofit organization that has been working to promote educational opportunities for over 56 years. During the past three years, USA Funds has shifted its focus to what we call completion with a purpose, and that's promoting high-quality education and training programs, but with a purposeful connection to employment and rewarding careers. Forward-looking mayors like yourself, Mayor Dyer, and other municipal leaders are increasingly recognizing the link between a well-educated citizenry and their community's economic and social health. So USA Funds has partnered with the U.S. Conference of Mayors to recognize mayors and communities that have invested in innovative initiatives to promote college and career readiness. We hope this recognition spurs other communities to adopt similar practices. Mayor Dyer's Children's Initiative offers a range of programs and partnerships intended to increase youth academic and employment success, particularly among Orlando's most disadvantaged youth. Today, Mayor Dyer's Children's Initiative, as was mentioned, has served over 13,000 children per year. Ninety percent are low-income, covering an estimated 73%, I understand, of all low-income children residing in Orlando. This work aligns very closely with what USA Funds' vision of a better, educated, more skilled population of students who are ready to succeed in the jobs that the local economy is producing. The ultimate goal is to prepare these students to pursue fulfilling careers so they are contributing to the economic and social vitality of the community. The panel of outside judges who reviewed applications from cities across the country for this award program were extremely impressed with this initiative, and as a result, they selected Orlando as the medium-sized city with the population between 200,000 and 500,000 to receive the 2016 U.S. Conference of Mayors USA Funds Education Pathway Award. There's a cash award that goes along with this recognition, so on behalf of the Board of Trustees, Management, and Staff at USA Funds, I am delighted to present you with this check for $40,000 to continue your work.
We're going to ask Mayor Dyer to come down, and all the staff and youth employees come up for photos, photo together, and our commissioners as well. And I have a present for Commissioner Hill today, and that is that, it's not the $40,000, sorry. But remember at the beginning of the summer when you held a youth jobs fair to try to get youth employed for the summer? The FPR department employed 60 of those youth this summer.
Wow.
Sixty of them.
All right, our second proclamation is declaring August the 18th as Give Life Orlando Day, and Debbie, our wellness coordinator, will give us an overview.
Thank you, Mayor, commissioners. As we know, blood donations are needed throughout the entire year. However, many people are not aware that the late summer is usually the highest demand. Schools provide a lot of the resources for the blood supply, and so at this time of the year, we are in high demand for blood with the schools being out and the numerous tourists that we have in town. There was a partnership developed with the Central Florida Hotel Lodging Association at WFTV9, City of Orlando, and OneBlood to help draw attention and bring folks out, and that is going to be this Thursday, and we're going to have locations at WFTV Channel 9, Church Street, Orlando Health, Orlando City Hall, the Courtyard Marriott, and the Doubletree. So we're going to encourage everybody to come out and donate that can. Some people think when you donate blood, well, a donation is one for one. Sometimes a single accident can require over 100 pints of blood. So I am going to encourage everyone to come out and help save a life. It's a way that you can help so many others in the community, and you don't have to don a badge or be a doctor, but you can help so many that are out there. So I'd like to invite George Ramirez, the donor recruitment manager, up from OneBlood, and he's going to receive the proclamation from the mayor. I'll turn it over to Mayor Dyer. Thank you.
Just before I read this proclamation, I want to acknowledge the role that OneBlood played in Pulse on that evening. I don't know how many units of blood were used. I heard that one individual used, what is it, 28 pints, 28 pints of blood? But how many pints of blood are in one human? Ten. Okay, and one patient that night used over 200 pints, so you can just think of the enormity of that. And it's my understanding that without the merger that OneBlood had a few years ago, it might have been difficult to meet the need that night, but it certainly reemphasized why it's important to have a good supply of blood on hand for whatever crisis or emergency you might have. So I don't think that enough significance has been drawn to the fact that we had that blood available and saved a lot of lives that night because we had the blood. Okay, City of Orlando proclamation. Whereas one in three people will need a transfusion at one time or another during their lives, and whereas blood cannot be manufactured, and whereas only 38% of the U.S. population is eligible to donate blood, and less than 10% do annually, and whereas one pint of blood can save up to three lives, and whereas in most cases, blood donated will be transfused with two or three days of donations, and if, whereas if only an additional 1% of all Americans would give blood, blood shortages would disappear for the foreseeable future, and whereas the City of Orlando, the Central Florida Hotel Lodging Association, the Church Street District, Orlando Health, WFTV Channel 9, and OneBlood, our local blood center, have joined together to create Give Life Orlando, and whereas Give Life Orlando will make it easy for all downtowners to give blood to those in need, and whereas the City of Orlando recognizes the importance of all blood donations and the selfless act of kindness of blood donors, now therefore, I, Buddy Dyer, Mayor of the City of Orlando, in recognition of the importance of donating blood to save lives, hereby do proclaim August 18th, 2016, as Give Life Orlando Day in the City of Orlando.
On behalf of OneBlood, I would sincerely love, like to thank Mayor Dyer, all of the commissioners, the city, and I especially want to recognize a couple of people, Jay Leonard and Deborah Ray, who are the actual co-founders of Give Life Orlando. Linia Dawes with CFHLA has been very instrumental. Carly Leonard is over there. Hi, Carly. And also WFTV Channel 9, who's been a tremendous partner of ours. So on behalf of OneBlood, we really want to say thank you to all of you.
I could add to that. Carly is the one who actually helped motivate this when she was diagnosed with cancer in 2010. This August 9th, she just celebrated her five-year anniversary. So she's now. She'll be heading off to Valencia for the fall and going to UCF in the spring. So she'll be staying home.
Okay, let's go right into the mayor's update. Commissioners, I want to start my update by recognizing two of you who are a year older this week.
About three of us.
And that would be District Five Commissioner Regina Hill, whose birthday is today, and later this week, on August the 18th, District Two Commissioner Tony Ortiz will celebrate his birthday. So I happen to be in August birthday as well, mine has already passed, but any other August birthdays, Leo's almost have a majority on this council. So as is our custom, let's sing Happy Birthday to Commissioner Hill and Commissioner Ortiz.
Happy birthday to you.
You can sing.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear commissioners.
And mayor.
Happy birthday.
And a mayor.
To you.
You know what? This is not my script, but I want to acknowledge the passing of a former city chief of staff, Dave Dix. He was a campaign consultant of mine, and then he was my first chief of staff for the first two years that I was mayor, and he's been instrumental in other people's lives on this council as well. I attended the funeral last Saturday, two Saturdays ago, and the reason I was just thinking about this is Commissioner Ortiz sang at the funeral, and he sang in Latino dialect, Danny Boy. So just imagine that as everybody's exiting church, but it was a beautiful rendition. And Commissioner, I'll give you a couple of minutes if you'd like to recreate that.
I'm choking right now. I'm going to wait.
Okay. It was beautiful though, it really was. Okay, today is the first day of school for thousands of students in Orange County, and I'm proud that the city continues to provide opportunities and support for our youngest residents. Lisa Early highlighted a lot of the programs that we have through after-school All-Stars. We serve, as they said, 13,000 students on an annual basis, and we're focused on impacting academic success, reducing juvenile crime, and promoting health and wellness. And there's still room in those programs, so if you want to sign up for affordable children's programs, visit cityoforlando.net backslash FPR. Okay, and in case you missed it, I want to mention that last week, Orlando was named the, the number one, not number one, two, or three, the number one pet-friendly city in the U.S. The ranking came from wallethub.com and recognized our city for the number of pet-friendly restaurants, pet stores, parks, and our city's walkability. And I would like to recognize Commissioner Sheehan for the important role that she played in achieving this honor. You'll recall that she not only helped us create an ordinance to make our restaurants dog-friendly, but she went all the way to Tallahassee and changed, or got the legislature to stay, change state statute to allow municipalities to have dog-friendly dining. So thank you, Commissioner Sheehan. On the agenda today, item D2 is an item that will help spread pride as well as awareness of our city parks and also raise money for local not-for-profits. Downtown Credo and the Orlando Community Youth Trust, which supports the mission of our city's family parks and rec, this kind of city parks and rec day right here. The collaboration is called Orlando Parks Project, and we will, they will recruit 20 local artists to create illustrations that interpret the artist's experience in selected city parks, and they will be printed in a limited edition, oversized coffee table book that everyone will want to have on their coffee table. CRA number four, as we continue to grow as a downtown through increased residential development, it is important that we have amenities that are high-quality for our residents, our workers, and our visitors. And on today's agenda, there is an item that will help us bring a new green grocery store to the downtown core, and it'll be part of a mixed-use development that is at the intersection of Orange and Gore. With that, we will turn to the consent agenda, and the consent agenda is a number of items that are acted upon through a single vote of council. We give each of our council members an opportunity to comment on items on the consent agenda or update you on important happenings from their district. We rotate the order that we do that. First up is Commissioner Stewart, but just before I go to Commissioner Stewart, I do want to mention that at Agenda Review today, we postponed ordinances, First Read Number Three, to a future date. So if anybody was here for the Parks Impact Fee ordinance, it will be at a later council meeting. All right, Commissioner Stewart?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you very much for getting a chance to celebrate y'all's birthday. I appreciate that. I get to be a November birthday. Back to school, 185,000 students in our community, but I had a chance to be out at Rosemont this past weekend, and I'm reminded often that our, we go from school to summer program and to school. So our guys are going to be busy this afternoon, and I'm thrilled about the work that we're doing over there. Lisa, thank you for your leadership and for your entire staff's leadership. I had a great event at Rosemont, and it was wonderful. Had a chance to represent the city over at the K-9 Memorial Event. It's a growing event we do every year at the Harbin Park in Baldwin, just as a reminder how important. I learned a new term this weekend. They called them, they call our pets our fur angels. Thought that was kind of a nice way to say it, so. So we get a chance to celebrate our fur angels. And then I had a chance to spend some time with Junior League. It was really encouraging to talk with their educational group, and they were asking questions about our city's response and the One Orlando Fund and the things going on with the Pulse shooting, that tragedy, and it's wonderful to see this part of our community embracing, wanting to make change and impact our community. I was thrilled to be there and represent them in our district, so. Couple of quick updates. The OCPS is having our, on Wednesday evening, is Audubon Park Elementary update on the new Audubon Park K-8 construction plan. If you're interested, please come out and join us. And then just mentioning it now, so that some people are asking questions. We didn't do National Night Out in August this year, thank goodness. It was a little hot, and it was always on my anniversary week, so I had a chance to actually take my wife out to anniversary dinner this year. But we have moved it to October 4th, so make sure you start planning your block parties now. Register. Please contact our Neighborhood Watch or contact your police liaison officer. The only thing I want to mention on the consent agenda is on item C12, a business assistant grant for the Bim Bom Group over coming into the Audubon Park Garden District. I'm thrilled about that, and we want to make sure they're a part of our Audubon Park Garden District and have a chance to help them get settled into a new spot. It's another way that we try to promote small business in our community. So, and with that, that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner. Move on to District Four. Commissioner Sheehan.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I'd like to thank the Carol Adams Group. They did 92 backpacks for the children of Reeves Terrace. This is the 12th year that they've done that, and the kids got sent back to school today, full of school supplies for the entire year. So again, this is all privately funded. Ted Carroll's a good friend of mine, and he's really committed to helping those kids at Reeves Terrace, so want to shout out to him and thank you very much for his philanthropy and helping the kids at Reeves Terrace. Very proud of being the most dog-friendly city in America, and I think something that we kind of need to work on too is letting people know about where we have the dog parks. Because some of the, something I saw over the weekend where people saying, well, there are no dog parks, and I'm like, we have dog parks in Orlando, so I think when we open the downtown, the Constitution Green Dog Park, we should probably maybe do some maps and let people know where they are. In addition to the fact that we do have a pet memorial over Greenwood, I think a lot of people aren't aware of that, so if we can start using that opportunity to push them of our dog-friendly amenities, and the fact that Commissioner Ortiz had the first dog park, yes, sir. You know, I think it's really important to let folks know, again, because I was stunned to see that people didn't know that we had dog parks in Orlando. So again, I think clearly when I see that out there, it lets me know that we have work to do in terms of getting the word out. Was very, very sorry to hear of the passing of Frank Holt, and just an amazing human being, and a lot of people don't realize, he was a quiet, southern gentleman who got so much done in the arts community, and, you know, he was just a lovely, kind man. He used to feed all the stray cats around the Manell and He used to feed all the stray cats around the Manalea Museum, and everybody just absolutely loved Frank, and he was one of those people who, you know, in very difficult budget years, still managed to get, add to our art collection and do so in a very beautiful way. He actually has decorated a lot of the, he actually chose a lot of the art for a lot of the venues over the years. He's worked for the city for a long time, so a tremendous loss, and our condolences to Bob, his husband, and just a tremendous loss to the city. And, you know, when people dedicate their lives to public service, a lot of times they get overlooked, and Frank was always so quiet in what he did, but what he did in this community really is going to have a lasting impact, and the Manalea Museum really is his legacy. On the agenda today, on item C-2, the Thornton Park District Storm Drain. Glad to see this project moving forward and all the art that's happening throughout our downtown, and really excited to see this, what Thornton Park's got in store for us. On item C-3, the missile planning board, I am delighted to see that the Eola House at Lake Eola now has historic status, something we really wanted to accomplish, and I'm very glad to see that. On item C-15, we also have a historic preservation tax exemption, again, to restore these beautiful historic homes, so these people get a little bit of a tax break from that. On the agenda today as well, item D-3, Memorial for Chase Smith. We actually put out statues for Chase over three years ago. Somebody complained about the fact that this had gotten put in place, and we had to go back and look at our policies and procedures, and we hadn't quite followed them to the T's, so now I have gone before the board and everything, dotted my i's and crossed my t's and done everything as it was supposed to, and we will be replacing one of the bunnies, because I don't exactly know who vandalized our bunny in Lake Como, but we kind of have an idea. It might have been the gentleman who complained, but we're going to actually replace the vandalized bunny, and I was just gonna move the rabbit from Lake Como to Colonial Town with all the controversy that was happening. The neighbors had a Save the Bunny campaign, so we're just gonna add one at Colonial Town as well, because that's where we're gonna move the bunny to, so yes, the rabbits are multiplying, but it's all happening because of Chase's friends, put a lot of money into his memorial account, so if any of these things happen again, we can replace them if they get vandalized. But I guess the fellow realized when he tried to beat the ears off the bunny, it was reinforced with rebar, so he wasn't quite as successful as he thought he was gonna be. So again, I think Chase is having a lot of fun up there, watching us with all this controversy about his bunny statues, but again, you know, if you want to put something special, we do have a memorial and monuments policy, and Chase was a very special person in a lot of people's lives, and a lot of these families actually take pictures with their kids over the years next to the bunny, so it's really cute to see how that happens, and Chase continues to live on in our memory as well as in our parks with our children at their Easter celebrations. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. We'll move on to District Five, Commissioner Hill.
Thank you, Mayor. It's been a pretty eventful couple weeks since last. I do want to send a special thank you to Mr. Harris Rosen. This week, he announced not only all the children in Paramore going to college free, but every child that attend Jones High School will have a free scholarship to attend college, and that is huge. So thank you, Mr. Rosen, for all that you do here in disadvantaged communities. We also have something I'm very excited about is, I see Mr. Henry's in the audience, out in the chambers, who's been a monumental leader and mentor there in the Paramore area for over twenty-eight years, and is gonna be receiving a MIBA grant. Thank you, staff, for all your diligence and hard work with helping Mr. Henry with some rent abatement. The last few years with Paramore growing and progressing, it does somewhat hinder some of the businesses there from traffic and things of that nature, so thank you for helping Mr. Henry with that rent abatement during this process of change, but positive change. On Tuesday, July 26th, I attended a call-to-action meeting relating to gun violence in our community. It was led by my brother's keepers and also OPD and OCSD, they were there. I think I also saw our fire department there also, so thank you all for coming out. I think it was an eight-hour meeting to where we're just getting different initiatives throughout the country on how to address gun violence. On Wednesday, August 31st, I, along with staff, Mr. Mike Rhodes, Marco Rubio's office, met with HUD from out of Washington, Jacksonville, in here locally. I had a town hall meeting with the tenants of Windsor Cove. I know we've been hearing a lot of concerns and issues regarding inadequate housing by global ministries, so they flew in to speak with the residents, also to do a site visit and to give them information on how to log reports regarding some of the, as I stated, living standards over there, and we will continue to work with HUD on these issues to help them resolve these issues and how to move forward with those residents over there so they can have adequate living conditions. On August the 6th, with the sponsorship of Orlando City Soccer, Orlando Magic, Majestic Life Church, Lee Wesley's, A1 Orange, here in District Five, we were able to provide over a thousand book packs with supplies. Three hundred and fifty, we also partnered with Adidas. We gave out four hundred and fifty pair of brand-new Adidas tennis shoes, partnered with Second Harvest, and they gave out five hundred food kits, and we also were able with the Queens of the South Girl Bike Club, they gave out fifteen electrical tablets for the youth there, and we also had some additional supplies from different areas. They gave out dental kits, toothbrushes, toothpaste, and floss, so. And what I did was made this a city event. It wasn't just for the children of Paramore, it was for any child that was in need, so it was open for every kid in the summer, so, I mean, from the city. So I think all the kids in the city of Orlando are going back to school with the fourteen thousand kids that were supplied over at Camp World Stadium on that day with your back-to-school supplies with Commissioner Stewart. I was with Commissioner Eames on Saturday, where he was taking care of kids, and I let him explain what he did. That was a well-attended event also. So we do know that education is the greatest equalizer, and some folks say, "Well, why give out backpacks? It's just a political stunt." No, those parents wouldn't say that. Those parents that can't afford paper and pencils and those necessary basic supplies for their children to go back to school with so that they don't have to be scorned or bullied because they didn't walk on campus on this Monday without supplies, so I challenge anyone to go tell someone that don't have that it's just a political stunt when we take care of our babies in the city, so that they can also have a fighting start during that school year. On Monday, August the 8th, and I'm sorry for ranting about that, but I saw someone say on social media that book children are used as props, and I find it very insulting and insistive when people think that some of the things that we do for the disadvantaged and underserved is just a political stunt and grandstanding. No, we're taking care of people that don't have, so forgive me for that. On Monday, August the 8th, I, along with Orlando City Soccer and our Blueprint program, held a job fair there in Paramore, and again, it was for any tradesmen throughout the city, not just Paramore, that's where we had it, since the soccer stadium is being built there, and it's for tradesmen that are drywall hangers, metal stud, painters, and electricians. So if you know anyone throughout the city that might be looking for a job, have them contact our H-VAC. So if you know anyone that might need a job and have those skill sets, please have them contact our Blueprint office so that they can get further information on how to acquire jobs as they ramp up those skill sets right now. And that was it for me, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. We'll move to District Six, Commissioner Eames.
Thank you, Mayor. July 25th, we had the HIV in the Black Community event scheduled at the Dr. James R. Smith Center. It was coordinated by Dr. Andrea Dunn. She's a pharmacist and CEO of Let's Be Hive, and also we had Hope &amp; Help that was there, and Gilead was there. A guest speaker from Washington, DC, a local physician who'd been dealing with HIV education and attending to HIV victims. He's from Washington, DC, a very enlightening person, so we had a great time there. And Monica May, star of ninety-four point five radio, was the emcee and also the guest host. And on the 25th of July, I attended a groundbreaking ceremony of Ronaldo Soccer Academy at thirty-five sixteen President Barack Obama Parkway. Carlos Martins and Louise Martins, the owners of this particular academy, is gonna be a great asset to our city and specifically for our youth. And then on Saturday, July 30th, I brought greetings from District Six and the city of Orlando to the Rathman Club's Seventeenth Annual El Claudia Allen Senior Summer Banquet that was held at the El Claudia Allen Senior Center on Maple Butler Avenue in Orlando. Then August the 6th, we had a Unity Day event that was hosted by Ms. Audrey Wilson of the Firstborn Church with Bishop Cohen, Herbert Cohen is the pastor. This event was held at the Dr. James R. Smith Center. Bishop Kevin Gaviris of the Impact Church of Orlando was its guest speaker. Then on August the 10th, Jack Williams held a press conference. Jack Williams is the president of Stop the Violence, Embrace Peace, and this was in regards to the shootings and homicides, and he also had a visual there at seven oh five Grand Avenue. Thank you to Lieutenant Rich Ruth of the Orlando Police Department and Sergeant Noella Pena, as well as Officer James West from the Orlando Police Department for being present at this event. The community came out in support of this prayer visual, lots of support from local pastors. And then also attended on Thursday night at the Orlando Jazz Festival that was held at the Orchid Garden there at Church Street Station. I brought greetings on behalf of the city, and also Najee and violinist Ken Ford were the artists on hand. Steel City Jazz from Birmingham, Alabama, they are bringing their program into Orlando, and this was their very first start, very successful. Cedric Allen, president, and thank you Walter Hawkins and Thomas Chapman for your support of this event as well. It was very successful, and they certainly enjoyed Orlando. And then on Saturday, I held the, my annual District Six Crime Prevention Walk and back-to-school event. The Crime Prevention Walk began at the Washington Shore Shopping Center and ended at Frontline Outreach. We had over three hundred kids to receive book bags filled with school supplies. We also fed them a nice little lunch. Pastor Derek McRae of the Experienced Christians Center called me and said they had some shoes that they'd like to donate, so some shoes came over, and people enjoyed the shoes. Two weeks from now, we will celebrate the District Six Fun Spot Day with all of those youth and children that marched with us and their families at Fun Spot, and we'll have a day of great fun and activity and also lunch there at Fun Spot. And then the last thing is the Third Annual Florida Internship Award Scholarship Fundraising Gala that was sponsored by Apapa, Asian Pacific Islander American Public Affairs Association. Andrew Jin, the president of Apapa Central Florida, was on hand with about ten different interns, so they were awarded awards for all of their efforts in participating and learning more about different businesses throughout Central Florida. One event was held at a church off of Goldenrod, and the students were there participating, and they conducted a visual concerning the Pulse. So these are young people that are students, high school and college students that are doing great things in our city, and that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. We'll move on to District One, Commissioner Gray.
Thank you, Mayor. Activities in District One will pass in future on the website, so I'd refer people to that, and with that, I'll leave it to our birthday board to finish up.
District Two, Commissioner Ortiz. Let's sing it again.
You know what? You're special, what can I say? Mayor, congratulations to you and Commissioner Hill. Happy birthday to both of you. You know, a great month. I believe the president's birthday was this month, wasn't it? My father is on the 25th, my sister, it's a bunch of Virgos and Leos in the family.
And Madonna, too.
Madonna, yeah, there you go. Sean Connery. Sean Connery, too, so. You, too. There you go. Should do like they do at churches, you know, they ask first to the people in the audience whose birthdays are, you know, so we can sing for everybody. Anyhow, Mayor, thank you for mentioning former chief of staff David Dix. He was truly a character. He was a great man and a, what can I say? He was my friend, and you knew him better than anybody else, but the years I met him, and he helped me tremendously in so many ways, and very proud of our friendship, but very proud of having gotten to know him and his family and his kids. He loved his kids, and he was just, he was just different. He was just a straight shooter, a Wyatt Earp kind of guy, so. But I really enjoy, I think he left before his time, and those of us that know him well, I think we were very saddened by his departure. Anyhow, moving to other things, I have to congratulate America. Team USA is really kicking, you know what? Is it, what, twenty-four medals, last time I heard? Doing really good. And let me take advantage and also say congratulations to Puerto Rico, the first gold medal. You know, hurrah. I was very proud to see that young lady, the way she played the German counterpart, but it's been very exciting to watch some of those games, I mean, the games, and so. On the other side, with issues of the district, we officially opened the Dover Shores Community Garden. The first membership meeting was on July 18th, and I want to thank Mr. Ian Jurgensen, he's done a great job, and Chris Castro. Chris, I heard that you were representing us at NATO, is that true?
United States.
Okay, that's awesome. That is awesome. You see, Orlando, number one. So yes, we're doing really good on all our green aspects. Mayor, your leadership on this has been tremendous, and thank you. Thank you for taking us to a whole new level. We have raised a bar. National Night Out, we had a safety summit for our seniors in the district. It was a lot of fun. Spanish, it was in Spanish and English, our senior, mainly Spanish, senior citizens at the Englewood Center, but they had a lot of fun, and we did, too, along with them. We had two backpack events. We had one at Sedano's, and our manager at Sedano's, oh my God, I drew a blank, it's gonna, forgot his name. Anyhow, forgive me. He did a great job, and the place was packed, and kids were all over the place. And then the other one we had, we had at Dover Shores Elementary, and people from all over, all walks of life came over, and we had a great giveaway of book bags. Great families, teachers, the members of the Dover Shores Elementary community, and the family at the school, they were awesome. Finally, we have officially launched our District Two Logo Contest, and where's Stephanie? Stephanie's my lady on this. Anyhow, there she is. Looking for a visual identifier for the Seminole Quarter. I don't know how many of you know, we're rebranding the Seminole Quarter, so we have a logo showdown, and it's open to any and all District Two residents, open to individual and/or team entries. The winning design will become the official identifier for the City of Orlando District Two, basically for the quarter, and the winner, or winning team, is gonna receive a It's basically for the corridor and the winner or winning team is going to receive a few, a few gifts and we're not going to get into the particulars. We're not going to give out the, the particulars, but they're good rewards. I can assure you that. The submission deadline is September 15, 2016. It's now 40 grand. It's now 40 grants. It's now 40 grants. It's pretty good. One more thing, I went out and, right along on Thursday night. Chief, I'm glad to say District 2 was awesome that night. I, I don't know about the other districts, but I know about District 2. It was really quiet and your guys, I'm telling you, they really excel. Our police department, what can I say? Very proud of them, everything you guys are doing. The next visit is going to be with the firefighters. I'm going to start doing that more often. It's, it's a lot of fun and it's good to see a citizen during nighttime and during different hours of the, the day and whatnot. So, thank you so much, Mayor. That's all I have.
You got a motion, Commissioner?
Yes, I do. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Ortiz, second by Commissioner Sheehan. All in favor, the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and so the, by unanimous vote, the consent agenda is adopted. Without objection, we will recess the City Council meeting and convene the CRA meeting. First order of business is approving CRA Advisory Board meeting minutes from April the 27th. Is there a motion to accept those?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Sheehan, second by Commissioner Hill. All in favor indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number two is approving CRA meeting minutes from May 9th. Is there a motion to?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Sheehan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Eyes have it. Number three, approving CRA meeting minutes from July 11th.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Sheehan. All in favor indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. All right. Number four, economic development incentive agreement for grocery at Lucerne Development. Thomas, want to tell us about that?
Thank you, Mayor. Certainly. Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. As the Mayor mentioned in his, in his remarks, Crescent Lucerne Venture LLC is seeking to redevelop or develop 4-point purchase and develop 4-point cents acres of property within downtown redevelopment area. Again, the Mayor mentioned is at the northwest intersection of South Orange and Gore Street. The program for development would consist of a mixed-use development of 376 residential units, over some 31,000 square feet of ground floor retail. That would be anchored by 24,000 square foot grocery store. And of course, there'd be structured parking as well. I'd like to just remind the council that the 2015 update of the downtown redevelopment area plan encourages the CRA to promote and encourage mixed-use development and to continue to support developments in downtown to build commercial ground floor retail-ready space as well as going as far as to address targeting certain retails to fill in various retail gaps, including grocery stores. The CRA is proposing to provide a tax increment rebate to Crescent equal to 30% of the revenue derived from the project over a five-year period of time after the certificate of occupancy, capped at $100,000 per year and for a total of five years with a total cap of not more than $500,000. In order to receive this, this tax increment, Crescent would have to close on the property or purchase the property by December 31st of this year. They'd have to secure a 20-year lease of a reputable grocery retailer. They'd be required to submit, to donate $1,500 annually for the five-year rebate period to the DDB for special event funding. They're required to include a public art component to the project with a minimum value of some $50,000. And finally, they're encouraged, they're required to encourage the grocery tenant to provide employment and career training to residents of the Paramore neighborhood as well as senior citizens and provide a shopping cart control plan. This CRA Advisory Board has recommended approval, Mayor. And if there are no questions, staff is seeking approval of the economic development incentive agreement for grocery store at Lucerne Development between the CRA and Crescent and authorization for the chairman of the CRA and executive director of the CRA to execute the agreement subject to the review and approval of the city attorney's office and approval of expenditures from the downtown Orlando Community Redevelopment Area Trust Fund in the amount of up to $500,000 in tax increment rebates for Crescent.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Sheehan, second by Commissioner Hill. Questions of Thomas, comments? If none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. All right.
Thank you.
Number five.
Number five is approving a MIBA for J. Henry's Barbershop. As you know, MIBA provides financial assistance to qualified new and existing retail and service businesses within the Paramore area. J. Henry, J. Henry LLC is a full-service barber shop, I think that most, all of you know about. We all know about J. Henry's. That is, has a wide range, reputation in the area and has gained considerable momentum and has many clientele's within the area. John A. Henry, or better known as J. Henry to everybody in Paramore and beyond, has, has worked in Paramore area, as Commissioner said, for some 28 years plus and is a staple in that area. J. Henry's Barbershop is located at 644 West Church, which is just across the street, south immediately southwest, if you will, of the, the future Orlando Soccer Stadium and has been, as the Commissioner pointed out, has been subject to the disruption that's associated with that. The applicant is requesting a six-month rent abatement totaling $50,400 and both the MIBA and the CRA Advisory Boards have recommended approval. Again, if there are no questions, staff is seeking approval of the MIBA funding agreement between the CRA and J. Henry LLC and authorization for the chairman and executive director of the CRA to execute the agreement subject to the review and approval of the city attorney's office.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Sheehan. Questions of Thomas? Discussion here, none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Any further business?
There's none.
Comes for the CRA, Thomas?
There's none, Mayor. Thank you.
All right, then CRA will stand adjourned and we will reconvene the City Council meeting. Move to hearings, ordinances on second reading, number one. Madam Clerk.
Ordinance 2016-57. An ordinance of the City Council, an ordinance of the City of Orlando granting environmental one LLC, a non-exclusive franchise to provide roll-off container collection and disposal of solid waste within the City of Orlando, outlining franchisees duties and providing the terms and conditions under which such franchise shall operate, providing for severability and an effective date.
Motion by Commissioner Sheehan, second by Commissioner Stewart. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among Commissioners, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number two, Madam Clerk.
Ordinance 2016-56. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orlando, Florida, amending the city's adopted growth management plan to change the future land use map designation for certain land generally located west of Narcisse Road, north of Biplane and east of South Goldenrod Road comprised of 8.62 acres of land, more or less, from office low intensity to office medium intensity, changing the property zoning designation from O1 slash AN to O2 dash slash AN, providing for an amendment of the city's official future land use and zoning maps, providing for severability, correction of scrivener's errors, permit disclaimer and an effective date.
Move to a dot. Second. Motion by Commissioner Gray, second by Commissioner Ortiz. Is there anyone from the public that would testify? Discussion among Commissioners, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number three, Madam Clerk.
Ordinance number 2016-55. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orlando, Florida, designating certain land generally located at the southwest intersection of Park Lake Street and Highland Avenue comprised of .98 acres of land, more or less, as the planned development district along with the traditional city overlay district on the city's official zoning maps, providing special land development regulations of the planned development district, providing for amendment of the city's official zoning maps for severability, correction of scrivener's errors, permit disclaimer and an effective date.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Stewart, second by Commissioner Ortiz. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify? Discussion among Commissioners, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. All right, ordinances, first read, Madam Clerk.
Ordinance 2016-60. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orlando, Florida relating to building setback standards and historic preservation zoning overlay districts, amending Chapter 62 Orlando City Code to provide that certain principal and accessory structure setback variances may be approved by certificate of appropriateness, providing technical, grammatical and organizational amendments, providing legislative findings and for severability, codification, correction of scrivener's errors and an effective date.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Sheehan, second by Commissioner Ing. This is an ordinance that was a result of a couple of cases that were appealed directly to council to make some clarifications to the benefit of those who live in historic preservation districts. Anyone from the public like to testify? Discussion among Commissioners, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number two, Madam Clerk.
Ordinance 2016-59. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orlando, Florida, amending the city's growth management plan to change the future land use map designation for a portion of certain land generally located to the south of Livingston Street, west of Ifor and north of West Robinson Street comprised of 2.132 acres of land, more or less, from industrial to urban activity center, changing the property zoning designation from PTPH and IGTPH to AC dash two slash T slash PH, providing for amendment of the city's official land use and zoning maps, providing for severability, correction of scrivener's errors, permit disclaimer and an effective date.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Sheehan. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among Commissioners, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number three was deleted at agenda review and be heard at another council meeting. That brings us to the last item on our formal agenda, which is a recommended order from a hearing officer in case number QJ 2016-003 relating to the certificate of appearance approval for the Orlando City Soccer Stadium. The petitioner in this case is Luana Gelszer. The applicant is Scott Neal for Orlando Sports Holdings LLC. Let's have background on the case.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners. As you mentioned, this is a quasi judicial hearing, case number QJ 2016, number three. The property in question is a site of the Orlando City Soccer Stadium. This is located southwest central, west of South Terry, north of West Church and east of Glen Lane comprising approximately 10.7 acres. Some history on this site because it's gone through many hearings. On December 16th of 2014, the municipal planning board approved the future land use for the stadium from urban activity center to public recreational institutional and also rezoned the property to PD to allow for the construction of the soccer stadium. These MPB approvals were not appealed. On December 18th of 2014, the Appearance Review Board unanimously approved the major certificate of appearance approval for the stadium design. The ARB approval was not appealed. On January 12th, 2015, Orlando City Council accepted the minutes and approved the ARB decision. That approval was not appealed. On January 26th of 2015, the City Council adopted the GMP amendment and the planned development ordinance on first reading. Approved the same ordinances on second reading on February 26th of 2015 and neither of those adoptions were challenged or appealed. Project description, in October of last year, the applicant proposed the following, to amend the 2014 Appearance Review Board approval for the exterior design of the Orlando City Soccer Stadium for changes to the south facade of the stadium generally resulting from the expansion of the seating capacity for the stadium from 23,000 to 25,000 attendees and related improvements to those, that expansion. The remainder of the exterior design of the stadium, including the east, north and west elevations remained unchanged from the original ARB approval. Little bit on the ARB timeline, as described, they made application on October 12th of last year to make those changes to the south facade. On November 19th, the hearing was held by the ARB and they requested additional design detailing to the south facade of the stadium and deferred action on the amendment to the 2014 ARB stadium approval. I would add those changes were requested to address neighborhood compatibility and scale as it relates to the other facades in the neighboring properties on Tur Street. On February 18th of 2016, the ARB unanimously approved the amendments to the soccer stadium, certificate of appropriateness for appearance. On 24th, on February 24th of 2016, the petitioner filed a quasi judicial appeal of February 18th ARB approval. On May 26th, the quasi judicial hearing officer held a hearing for the ARB case in question and on July 11th, the hearing officer issues a recommended order for the ARB case appeal. This is a view of the south facade in question as approved in the 2014 approval from the Appearance Review Board. This is the facade as now designed in 2016 to address the additional seating capacity. These elevations represent on the top what was approved in 2014 and on the bottom what was approved in 2016, again, addressing the additional seating capacity for the stadium on the south side. This helps you to understand which portions of the stadium in those elevations actually front on the street itself, those shaded in red, are those portions of building that come up to the sidewalk streetscape area along Tur Street. You can see on the top elevation in 2014, there are three portions of the stadium that came to the street. In the revised plans as approved in 2016, the elevations come right to the street and are actually, in some cases, actually more in scale, particularly the stadium logo is recessed back from the facade on Tur Street. The quasi judicial parties, Luana Gelszer is the petitioner, respondent applicant is Scott Neal of Orlando Sports Holdings LLC and the respondent as well as the Economic Development Department, the City of Orlando. The petitioner raised, alleged that the ARB approved the major certificate of appearance approval amendment and violated the following things. First, downtown design guidelines, future land use elements, subbury policy S.6.3, future land use elements, subbury policy S.6.4 and future land use elements, subbury policy The hearing officer's recommendation said, based on the findings of fact and conclusions of law, it is hereby recommended that the City of Orlando deny the petition in opposition and that petitioner failed to carry her burden of coming forward with the evidence to support the alleged violations of the future land use elements, subbury policies S.6.3, S.6.4 and S.6.9 and the design, downtown design guidelines and failed to carry her burden of proof in these proceedings. The council went considering a recommended order from the hearing officer following section 2.209 of the Orlando City Code. You're not obliged to entertain further public comment. You may ask questions of staff or of the parties. You may allow up to 10 minutes per party, that's your choice. No new evidence may be submitted at this hearing today. You can adopt, adopt with changes or direct staff to prepare a revised RO and the council may not change findings of fact made by the hearing officer without stating reasons for such changes. I would just add, the staff recommends that you approve the hearing officer's recommendation and deny the appeal.
Questions for Dean, anybody? Then, as Dean noted, section 2.209 provides that we don't have the obligation to entertain comments, but we may allow up to 10 minutes. Historically, at least for the last 13 years or so, we have been giving the petitioner and the applicant five minutes each, so we will do that if there's no objection to that. And we'll begin with the petitioner, Luana Gelszer, you'll have five minutes.
State the name and everything.
Please.
Okay. Luana Gelszer, 76, 74, St. Stevenson Court, Orlando, 32835. I start off by saying I have standing. That's the most important thing that I can say today. I also want to thank Mayor Dyer and the City Council for the lesson that I was allowed to learn. Unfortunately, it confirmed what I thought was going to happen. The political bullying, the corruption, it continued on. I didn't have a problem with what was going on, I just had a problem with why was laws being violated. But when it came to requesting depositions of my mother-in-law, challenging me as owner, requesting my tax return, even going so far of the day of the hearing to give me a request for my tax returns, it led me to believe that no matter what was going to happen in this process, that people would not prevail. But I do not quit. I will not quit. I will say once again, thank you for the lesson. Whatever we need to do to make sure our special interest groups get what they need in the corporate welfare, that's fine with me. However, in the process, months earlier, I did voluntary withdraw a However, in the process, months earlier, I did voluntary withdraw a lawsuit. Now that I have standing, and now with the additional information that I have been provided, I will follow through with that suit. I want to say to each and every one of you, this was great learning process, it prepared me to how to fight when it comes to the people. But when you call, what, what Minister Betty Gelsner said at the beginning, when the foundation is wrong, it will fail. So we've started off with the process as it being a public venue, then it turned to a private venue, I asked questions about that. I'm still waiting for public request information, it's not additional information that I'm asking for, I've been asking for it for months. But I say to you, once again, thank you for the process, I have standing, I have standing, I have standing, and that's the most important thing in this process, that people believe that they can go up against Goliath. They can go up against Goliath, and I'll be a David every day of the year, every day. But I will fight for what I believe, because you did a whole lot of things, even passing the ordinance that allow, that's supposed to protect a community church, and you're allowing them to sell alcohol within a thousand feet. When you look at all of these ordinance, all of these policies that were supposed to protect that community, you failed to protect that community. So I say once again, the political bullying, the corruption, thank you very much for the special learning process, but I end by saying this, Mayor Dyer, if you had to do all of that, you didn't stop me. I have standing, and I will be back. Thank you for the learning experience. God bless you.
Okay, representing the applicant, Dan Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor Dyer, Commissioners. My name is Dan Johnson, I reside at twenty-eight thirty Norfolk Road, Orlando, Florida. I am here representing the applicant, Mr. Neal, in Orlando Sports Holdings LLC. Ms. Gelsner has not raised any issue that we contend should cause the council to do anything but accept the recommended order. The discovery and depositions that she referred to were specifically allowed under the City Code. Along with the city, I do note that we did file one document, which was a combination limited exception to the recommended order and some notice of scrivener's errors. I don't intend to argue the merits of the limited exception, we simply stand on that. And with respect to the scrivener's errors, that just noted some things that we felt perhaps should have been cleaned up in the recommended order, and we just wanted to make sure that it was clearly taken care of. I think the only thing that matters to the, the council this afternoon is that the legal description which is contained within the recommended order wasn't complete. The City Code says that there should be a legal description within the recommended order. Our limited exception put the complete and accurate legal description before the, the commission, the council, and we simply ask that any order approving the recommended order note that the correct legal description is as is set forth in the limited exception. If there are no questions, I'll be happy to sit down.
Questions for Mr. Johnson.
Thank you very much.
Kyle, you reviewed their request on the, related to the legal description?
We have, and we do recommend that you adopt the recommended order with that limited exception included in it.
Commissioner Hill, you have a motion?
Yes, motion to approve and adopt.
Including the limited exception.
Yes.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Sheehan. Discussion, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. That completes the official business of the Orlando City Council for today, August the fifteenth.